Can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson. Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis. Mr. Kilgore.
Yes, here.
Dr. Turner.
I'm here. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and it's not to be considered a public meeting. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll be going to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, can we do a vote?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Executive session at 6:54. A discussion of the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda for the October 16th, 2023, regular meeting of the Mount Healthy Board of Education?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Bryant. Sorry, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
All right, reading and signing of minutes. We have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 18th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
All right, is there any input from the Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
There's not.
All right, for communications and public input, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Turner.
So we have several people who want to address the board. I'm thinking probably all on the same topic, yes. Okay, so you have the opportunity to address the board. We will ask that you use a microphone so that it gets picked up on the recording. Our policy is you get two minutes. There's a two-minute limit to address the board. I'm going to remind everyone that if they're discussing a personnel issue, we cannot discuss specifics of a personnel issue in a public meeting. We respect the privacy and confidentiality of all employees, and we absolutely cannot violate that in a public meeting or even in a private meeting, one-on-one with any of you. And also, I'll urge everyone to keep that in mind in their own comments. Bear in mind that what you say is also being recorded. This is a public meeting, and any personal information about any employee should be considered very, very carefully before it is said. If anything is said that should not be shared publicly, I will ask you to stop, but I don't think that'll be necessary. So in no particular order, we can start with Kristin Kusman. Our policy states that anyone addressing the board has to either live in the district, have a child in the district, or be employed in the district. I am assuming that's gonna be true for everybody, so I'm not gonna ask anyone to verify that.
Hi, I'm reading on behalf of a coworker of mine, Erin Wirzba.
I think it is. It sounds like it's on.
This is my first year teaching at Mount Healthy. Although I have not known Mr. Morris for long, these are some things I have noticed and observed that I know to be true, and areas I believe you should take into consideration when deciding to accept his resignation. I always think it is crucial to point out the reason that we do this job is for the kids, and I hope that that is always what is put at the forefront of these decisions. With that said, these are some things I have observed in just my short four months of knowing Mr. Morris and teaching at the school he leads. I had other job opportunities, and I chose to work at this district because of meeting him and hearing about what he had to say about the faculty and the students he so clearly cares for. Two, he has stayed. He has been a consistent presence at a school that is not easy to be an administrator at. To me, this shows true character, to continue to pursue and strive for better each year instead of jumping to an easier situation in another district. Three, the junior high has improved under his leadership. Data shows that under his leadership, he has found a way to empower his faculty to help drive progress forward. The junior high is moving forward due to his leadership and passion for the students at this school. Four, he builds relationships and develops buy-in from the faculty. I have never seen a group of faculty members more gutted at the loss of a leader to their building. He has clearly done the work to develop buy-in from a group of phenomenal faculty members. From the top down, you can see the results in the junior high. Five, he retains faculty members. The junior high has a list of faculty members that have been teaching at the school for longer than I have even been teaching. It is incredible. That retention is due to his leadership. Six, he cares about our kids and is present with them. I have never seen an administrator more available than him in my 11 years of teaching. He is consistently in the halls, doing walkthroughs at carpool, helping at lunch, working with parents, et cetera. His presence is seen and felt each day. It will be hard to be replaced and very unfortunate to lose a leader who is so clearly invested in Mount Healthy and the development and growth of our kids. I hope you take this into consideration and once again, put our students' needs at the forefront of the decision.
Thank you. Just under two minutes, too. That was very well timed. And I guess we'll say something after all of the input. Christina Lanning.
Hello. I'm Christina Lanning, and I've been a resident of Mount Healthy since 2003. And I'm hired by Great Oaks Career Campuses to be on the staff at Mount Healthy Junior High School. I've been there since 2019. I teach career tech through STEM and problem solving. I love Mount Healthy, I love the city of Mount Healthy, and I love working at the junior high school. I love my team, and we are who we are in large part because of Mr. Morris. As a problem solver, I would love for you to look for another solution to this situation and possibly not accept Mr. Morris's resignation. Matt Morris is an incredible and consistent leader who does not advertise his accomplishments because he gives the credit to his team. Our school works well, and our teams are solid because of his leadership. He encourages each student, staff person, and teacher to do their best and to be their best every day, and we want to because we're a family. One way that Morris inspires excellence is through his gratitude. He is thanking us constantly through emails and also personal notes. I brought this personal note that he gave me my first year in 2019, which was a very rough start for me, and I've kept this in my wallet and I've reread it on difficult days. Very encouraging and inspiring. I believe you might have the authority as a board to look at what I might call a non-nuclear option. I would love to ask you to do that for the sake of our students and staff at the junior high school. I thank each of you for your service to our community, and thank you for your time this evening.
That was exactly two minutes. That was even more impressive. Thank you. Brenna Miller.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Brenna Miller. I teach eighth grade language arts at the junior high, and for those of you who don't know me, I rarely talk in meetings. When I heard Matt Morris resigned, I knew I must speak tonight. I could stand here and tell you about the national issue of teachers leaving the field, and their number and reason is citing lack of administrative support. Unfortunately, this is the national narrative. We have data that we will share later, but I have to speak to his personal character. The students view him as a constant figure in their lives. In his office hangs gifts from students gone by, including a poster titled "To My School Dad" that notes that student knew, even in the middle of teenage angst, that Morris wanted the best for and believed in them, just as a father should. Students ask where is he when he is gone, and him not being in the building is like a body without a heart. Speaking for myself, when my mother-in-law unexpectedly died two years ago during a routine surgery, I felt no fear over needing to take those days to plan her funeral. When we set up a GoFundMe to help me cover funeral expenses, Matt Morris somehow discovered it existed and donated $300. This allowed our family to give her the goodbye she deserved. He came to my baby shower, gifted me my son's favorite teether, and when I came back from maternity leave, he gave me a pair of his son's old pajamas. He said, "These were my sons, and I want you to have them." These pajamas hang in his closet still, and it doesn't include the multiple notes, cards, and words of encouragement that I've gotten throughout the years. What kind of a boss does this? And the answer isn't a boss, it's a leader. He's a wonderful human being professionally and personally, and he loved to say on the afternoon announcements he was changing the narrative. There's a hole in the junior high since he resigned. We are missing our heart. Should this resignation be accepted, my fear is that Mount Healthy will no longer be changing the narrative. We will be part of the national one. I love this community, this school, and our district. Mount Healthy Board members, I implore you to reject this resignation. Together, we can change the narrative. Go Owls.
Thank you. Caitlin, is it Ty?
I'll be speaking on behalf of Maddie McLaughlin. My name is Maddie McLaughlin. I'm an eighth grade intervention specialist and have worked under the leadership of Matt Morris for the last four years. Matt Morris has brought immeasurable value to our school. He is not just an administrator, he is the heart and soul of our school and our foundation to the whole building. He is the foundation upon our words, "Change the Narrative." His unwavering dedication to our students, staff, and commitment to fostering and nurturing educational environment is nothing short of extraordinary. He has built a sense of community within our school that is unparalleled. Personally, when I was hired four years ago, I immediately felt the sense of family and support. As an intervention specialist, for a principal to be so knowledgeable, supportive, and helpful with my caseload and responsibilities as a first-year teacher is something I could never forget. All the countless hours of meetings he has been a part of, the parent support and the care he shows for each child that comes across his desk. He pays attention to his staff and never misses an opportunity to share his gratitude for all that we do. After some really tough days, he has walked up through our hallways and told us how much we mean to this school and how appreciative he is, and that is the reason I come back in, day in and day out. I have so much respect for him. He makes me want to do better every day, show up and be the best teacher I can be. Mutual respect between a teacher and a principal is the cornerstone of a thriving school. It is a two-way street where both parties recognize each other's expertise, dedication, and contributions to the school community. This respect is not just a formality, it is a foundation. I plan to stay my whole career at this school. I have always said, "As long as he is here, I'll be here." His absence from the school will be felt in immeasurable ways that will have a negative impact on our students and our community, so I am asking you, please do not accept his resignation.
Thank you. Joe Radzansky.
All right, my name is Joe. I currently teach eighth grade at the junior high. I'm standing in front of you all right now to ask you not to accept Matt Morris's resignation. Mr. Morris matters. He matters to our students, to their parents, to our staff, to Mount Healthy. Mr. Morris is the heart and soul of the junior high. He's the reason that our students and our staff continue to change the narrative. You may be thinking that I don't know what a different principal can do with our staff and students. Maybe they're capable of matching what I know Mr. Morris has been doing, but in my 24 years in this district, having seen multiple principals run these buildings, I can tell you that in my experience, Mr. Morris is one of the best leaders that Mount Healthy has ever had. I know that his leadership results in success for our students and a consistency with our staff that goes unmatched throughout the district. Mr. Morris made a mistake, who hasn't? It didn't involve the police, students, parents. It hasn't affected his ability to run the junior high. We preach to our students regularly to learn from their mistakes, not crucify them for everyone that they make. Can't we lead by example here? Are there truly no other options than accepting Mr. Morris's resignation? Matt Morris matters. He matters to the quality of education that our students receive. He matters to our students. He matters to the junior high. Morris matters to Mount Healthy.
Thank you. Erica Nielsen.
Hi there. My name is Erica Nielsen, and I teach seventh grade English at the junior high. So obviously, we are all here tonight to make our feelings on the resignation of Matt Morris's junior high principal known. We are here tonight to be heard. I hope you can respect that by really paying attention, listening to us, and giving us all the time we're rightly afforded. I appreciate that you've done that so far. I do have a letter here from many of us. We actually passed this out to some of the staff, and 36 staff members signed the letter. I have a copy for each of you, which Ms. Fondori will hand out now. I'm gonna read some sections of the letter. You're welcome to follow along. I just want to be clear before I start reading that Mr. Morris did not ask us to do this. We are not here because he asked us to be. We are here because when we heard the news, all of us had a collective sense of no, and we're choosing to do something about it, which is why we're here talking to you. So I'll just start on the second paragraph here. A lot of this letter is data. We wanted to make it specifically about what the outcomes have been. For the last nine years, Matt Morris has been the principal of the junior high and has worked incredibly hard to cultivate a culture of growth, trust, and consistency in the building. His impact has been significant, and the loss of his leadership will be felt far and wide by the staff and students in the building. On a recent staff pulse check survey in which staff were asked about their feelings, 62.5% of staff members indicated that they strongly agree that they are supported by their administration. 37.5% agreed. That's 100% of staff either strongly agree or agree. This is a huge leap from where the staff was just a few years prior. When asked explicitly about the support of Matt Morris, about the support Matt Morris provides to the building, the responses were varied but all powerful examples of why so many of us want to continue working for him. He trusts his staff, and we feel that support. Always.
That's your two minutes.
Okay.
We have it, we will...
I encourage you to read it, especially that last paragraph. It's powerful stuff. Thank you.
Kim Brewster.
Good evening. Once again, I stand before you as a very concerned parent of this district. I am speaking to you today on my own volition in hopes that change will occur. Back in April of this year, I shared a very heartfelt statement that was not drafted in haste or intended to point the finger at anyone. The reason why I bring this up is to position the statement as objectively as possible, although the actions I am referencing have produced a great deal of sadness for myself and for my student. And being made aware about the resignation of Mr. Matt Morris, a very respected and highly regarded administrator who has been present and passionate in the lives of our children for quite some time, I could not help but see a glaring contrast between the swift action taken against him versus the very slow action taken against Rosemary Hagan. A situation where a person has been able to discreetly handle interests that have not been disrupted to students or parents, against a teacher who was blatantly called our young students cotton pickers. One who was allowed to finish out their contracted year for reasons explained though not strongly justified. When any of us assume a role that instructs, operates, and oversees the educational pursuits of our children, and authority is conveyed, which implies that as an adult, you will protect, respect, and educate those in your care. At the administrative levels, there seems to be a disconnect of the same commitment to our students as the operations of the system seem to take precedent, meaning that some matters that may require additional assessment or evaluation can get overlooked. When discussing this concern I have regarding Hagan, my question was, while you are assessing competency, who is assessing character? The question has not changed. Who questioned the decision-maker in this matter? Who discussed the fallout of the decision? Because you let a racist education finish out a whole year, but you're ready to dismiss one of whom our children are actually physically will fight you over. Morris is family to our students, not just another adult in the hall. This action once again proves Mount Healthy still does not have the heart of our children. You continue to make decisions that disrupt their day. Though not a teacher, there are some students who know they could go through the day because they see a Morris, a Marx, a Chriswell, a Griffinwall, a Kenzer, and so many more. Y'all don't even know...
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna finish this, though. Y'all don't even know how these people, who these people are to these students, or maybe you do, and you're envious. This is a bad call. You will reference policy in response to what I've shared. However, my response to that is, at this level, don't you have the ability to revise and introduce new policy? You mean to tell me that there was no other possible solution?
The rule is two minutes.
In fact, you can't tell me that. My question to you is, do you really want more? Do you really want more?
And finally, and I'm not gonna try to butcher the last name here, so Hannah... Okay. How do you pronounce your last name? Thank you. I think Dr. Hawkins is going to respond to the extent that she can. I'm just gonna say, and I'm not speaking for the board, this is just me talking, I really appreciate that you guys are so loyal and so passionate about an educator who has apparently really earned that loyalty for you. But I will also say that the district has been put in potentially a legally problematic position, so we have to put the district's welfare uppermost... I'm gonna stop there because I'm probably gonna say things I'm not allowed to say, but Dr. Hawkins.
And I know it was very difficult for many of you to come tonight to speak, and I do appreciate that you came out to speak about Mr. Morris, and the things that you conveyed, I would agree with you. You know, I hear Mr. Morris speak about each and every one of you as people that he considers family and that he cares about, and I think that's evident in all of your relationships from everything, from what Joe was talking about as far as retention and, you know, people wanting to show up and be part of the junior high. And so, the culture of the junior high, I think it is important to remember that all of you make up that culture. It's not just one person, even though that person I've heard refer to as the glue. All of you make that happen. You're each and every one of you support each other, and you're there for each other, and that does make the junior high an amazing place to be. Mr. Morris made a decision to resign on his own, for his own personal reasons, and, you know, to get the specifics of why he made that choice, you would really need to reach out to him personally. But that was his choice, and that's the decision that he made. And so, you know, we wish nothing but the best, obviously, for Mr. Morris, and we want to wish the best for the junior high, and we want to do whatever we can to make the culture that you're referencing one that remains at the junior high. So, you know, the board, it's not something that they take lightly, it's not something that I take lightly in this situation, but it is something that when we become aware of things, we do have to address them, and in this situation, Mr. Morris did make this decision, and it was something that he felt was best for him and his family.
And if I could, again, hopefully I'm not sharing more than I should. I'm sure some of you are sitting there thinking, "Yeah, he was probably given the choice to resign or be fired." That is not the case. There are reasons for that that we can't go into. I would say, on a matter like this, it would be the same at any district, anywhere, because we absolutely cannot talk about personnel issues in a public space. We just can't. We can't reveal anything about specific personnel issues, and yeah, I'll leave it at that. Okay. I think we're finished with the public input. Again, thank you for your passion and your loyalty. Yeah. Hand it back over to you.
Thank you. For the members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of this meeting, now would be the appropriate time for you to exit the meeting if you choose. All right, so we do not have a Great Oaks Board report tonight. The Legislative Liaison Report. Okay, there wasn't much happening. House Bill 33, which we've talked about before, would establish the Department of Education and Workforce as a cabinet-level reporting directly to the governor, is now in limbo after a lawsuit was filed by seven members of the SBOE and a Franklin County Court of Common Pleas judge issued a temporary restraining order blocking portions of House Bill 33 from becoming law. This temporary order was issued so that the court may review the legality of some provisions of the bill. The State House is also looking to more accurately reflect the chronic absenteeism rate through legislation. Senate Bill 49, originally passed by the Senate to mandate each K-12 public school to adopt policy providing students with religious expression days, has been amended by the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. Okay, can we move on to the report of the treasurer?
Yes, thank you. Letter A, I have the treasurer's update, and there are just three things that I would like to be able to share with the board. Last month, I did bring the attention to you all about our final expenditure reports that were due in September on the 30th, and just wanted to report back to let you all know that all of our final expenditure reports were indeed submitted through the CCIP portal at the state level on September the 30th, so we were able to get that done. Another item that I would like to point out is, we are in the process of getting our annual audit done. I have met with our firm, Plattenburg. We are getting our GAAP conversion done as well as our annual audit, and I have met with both teams and actually the regular audit team, they're gonna be here this week. I've gathered a lot of information for them to begin that process, so additional information will be forthcoming about that. And the last item is that I want to bring to your attention is, this is the year for reappraisals for property taxes. There are a lot of moving pieces with this this year, so I've attended a... There's a monthly treasurer's meeting that I attend, and when I attended the one last month, we actually had the state auditor, well, the county auditor there, and she was sharing some information with us. So the final evaluations have not been finalized, although they are close to being complete. It may present a problem for us next year when we get our first half-tax settlements because there may be a delay in us getting those settlements because the final evaluations have not been done. And once they are done, of course, property owners will have the opportunity to appeal if that is the case, which could further delay in them sending out the tax invoices, which may further delay in us getting our settlements. So that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention. Additional information about that is forthcoming because it seems like there's something that's unfolding on a weekly basis, so I'm sure I'll be approaching this conversation with you all even further just to keep you all up to date as to what's going on with the reappraisals. So those are the three things that I wanted to bring to your attention. And then for letter B, I'm recommending that you would accept the financial statement for September 2023.
Second.
Can we get a roll call? Or do we have any discussion? I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, Superintendent's Report?
Thank you. I wanted to give an update on the situation that happened last week involving the prank phone call to our school, specifically the junior high. Last week, I do want to just thank all of the police that did respond. You know, if it were a true emergency, it would be very critical that they respond intentionally and quickly, and all of the different forces around us did that. After we investigated the situation, what we discovered was that at lunch, there were some junior high students sitting together. One student was busy on a device and another student asked to borrow his phone. He did pass the phone over to the other student and continued what he was doing. After a few minutes, there was some laughter, and that's when he kind of looked up and they passed the phone back. We later discovered that the student did receive a text from 911 asking if it was a real emergency, and at that time is probably when the student realized that his phone had been used for something he didn't intend it to be used for. A call was made to 911, it was received, and in the call, the operator overheard someone referencing a shooting at the school. They also, a student made a comment about a tower falling. The police pinpointed the phone and saw that it was at the junior high. They then responded to the junior high, very quickly discovered that it was not a real threat situation, and started communicating that. The student that originally, they pinpointed the phone, he did cooperate, and through that and the video of the lunchroom, they were able to determine the other students involved. Another student confessed to the situation, and the police have charged that student with a felony in inducing panic. There is a rumor that there was weapons at the school, that absolutely is false. There was not a gun, there was not any type of weapon that was at the school, and there was not a suspicion of a weapon. Once they arrived and started tracking it, they very quickly discovered that it was a prank phone call. The phone was located in the cafeteria, and once the police came on site, we followed the directions from the police that they felt was best at that time. Our rooms have been upgraded this summer to have a night lock system in them, so as we demonstrated a couple times ago here at the board office, all of the teachers can secure the doors until we get the instructions from the police officers on if they want to evacuate or if they do not. So we are going to be meeting again with law enforcement just to review the situation, look at what everyone felt was done very well, and where we can improve as we always want to get better. But I did want to give an update on that since that was an impact, you know, it impacted our community last week. We have a couple of informational items. Change Order Number 36, moisture mitigation in our terrazzo. Our culinary center is coming along and will be finished very soon. The Change Order 37 is the window shade control cabling. We had our alumni event at Homecoming, a great success. A lot more alum came than the previous year. They had at least 350 that signed up, and I believe Ms. Bryant was there and was able to get her shirt. So we were excited and we appreciate Bryce Blanton and Lori Daniels for all of the work that they put into that, and it was just great seeing our alum there and hearing stories from when they were in school and what they shared. We hope that our new banquet center will be somewhere that our alum can utilize and use on a regular basis and an asset to the community. Item B is the second reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaw and policy changes, and they are listed below.
We get a motion to accept?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the item, animals in the district policy, is that according to, is that a service animal?
It is. It's primarily service animals, and then there's also noting that occasionally we do bring in animals to sniff out drugs occasionally, but animals have to be prior approved to enter the district, whether it's in that way or if it is a service animal. And we also have some staff that use service animals as well, so they do have to go through training, and they have to show us that they have been trained before they can be in our buildings. No, no. This would be animals that would interact with other students, so if it's a classroom where something's confined in a cage, this would not apply to that.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to purchase new access points and switches for central office internet from the Hamilton Clermont Cooperative, known as HCC. The total cost is $36,896.77.
Alright, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Could you explain exactly what that means?
As our systems have to upgrade, our access points are just a little bit outdated, so when we're trying to access the internet for district business, this just brings them up to code so that we can do emails and other online...
This is like a router, kind of a...
It is. It's actually like where the different computers connect to the different systems in the building and also on the first floor. We have our students in the building, so they need streaming and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to adopt a plan for remote learning due to school closure. This plan is for calamity days that go beyond the yearly school calendar, extra hours already allotted for school closing, and this is something that on a state level that all districts needed to submit.
So we weren't in jeopardy of going over those numbers, we're just following the rules?
Right. We build in a lot of extra time in our calendar, for instance, when the seniors get out a few days, but it would be, you know, we have around, depending on the school, around 18 to 20 extra days built in our calendar by what were required by law at the high school, 1,001 hours. The elementary is 900-plus hours, so they go longer than they have to by state mandate. But if, for some reason, we used up all of those, then we have to show how we would educate our students outside of those parameters, and so this is that plan.
Can we get a motion? Any other discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Recommendation E is to allow students to replace their fine art requirement with a career tech elective. If students go to Great Oaks, this is something we allow for them. We now have career tech programs in the high school. We have the early IT program, and our culinary students will be able to get credentialed and even earn an associate degree. So we're asking for students who are taking part in these very intensive certification programs that they are allowed to use that instead of the fine arts, the same as if they were to attend an actual Great Oaks campus.
Can we get a motion?
So moved. Oh, sorry. That was me. Any second.
Any discussion? She did.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I made the motion, Kim seconded.
Do you have any discussion? I was asking for discussion. We've moved past that. Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the consent agenda that's listed.
Can we get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Are there any special orders? No open discussion by the board? Alright. The date of the next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, November 20th, at 6:00 P.M. We'll adjourn, what time is it?
7:34.
7:34. We go to motion to adjourn?
So moved, oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.